Yes.[11.08][11.20]- Mrs. Oakerson.[12.20][12.32]- Mrs. Thorpe.[14.32][14.44]- He is en route, got delayed.[17.04][17.16]- He will be here shortly, Mr. Bon Jomani.[19.55][19.68]- President.[20.68][20.80]- Mr. O'Brien.[22.16][22.28]- Here.[23.80][23.92]- I believe we're being rejoined and then we will rise to the floor.[28.88][29.00]- Yes.[30.68][30.80]- Can I refer Sergeant Arms?[33.04][33.15]- Please, Mr. Thorpe, here. Round up the perky hats.[38.32][38.44]- I'm saying, would you become my temporary sergeant-at-arms?[41.76][41.88]- Thank you.[42.88][43.00]- Well, I call him his president, so let's rise and speak to the flag.[49.52][49.64]- I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[63.88][64.00]- Now, as the Vice President and Secretary of Action of the District, as required by the Department of Public Safety of the Board from the fall of 1975, Board of Districts, Vice Superintendent of Office 29, it is now time for the Superintendents and Board Presidents to retire. President and Board Superintendent O'Brien and Superintendent O'Toole, your remarks served.[84.32][84.44]- Thank you.
Well, as we all know, tomorrow is the biggest day that is...[93.04][93.16]- Do you see that, please, that we are trying to...[97.20][97.32]- It is the biggest day that our dedicated staff has been working tirelessly during these long, hot summer months to prepare and get ready for the opening of the school. Again, an incredible tradition, one which is very, very difficult to pull off smoothly, but as always, we anticipate a great opening. I know every single person here is excited. I know our superintendent, this staff, excited. I want to congratulate all of our staff, our teachers, everyone, building the ground, transportation, every single person that has been working tirelessly to make this opening successful. Thank you for your hard work over the summer. And I know how at the last minute everything comes up. But one of the things that's great about our team is that no matter what chance or fate might throw at you in terms of last-minute needs, our district has always given it the occasion because the most important thing is to make that first day of school a welcoming, safe, comfortable environment for us all. So again, thank you to all of you involved in doing that. I also have some news, as is our practice. We have a very, very strong partnership with the Health Police Department, and they will be on the force to support our first day back to school tomorrow. I'm very pleased to announce that I've been told we have an additional full-time sworn SRO, Mr. Jay Higgins, joining Maureen McBride in addition to our nine SL3 officers. So we have a total of 11 law enforcement officers working within our district this year. Again, that's tremendous. You know, we really are focused on enhancing the safety and security of all of our schools, and we are very grateful for our partnership with the Health Department. So in addition to that, Bert Lee's Transportation Department has been working very, very hard because of the environment. And I know our operations chair and our finance chair will talk a little bit more about this, but, you know, has been able to extract over 330,000 savings through transportation efficiencies, which when you think about it, translates into protecting, preserving quality of educational programs. One of the missions that we face in the district has been, how do we continue to provide high-quality education, support our teachers and staff in the classroom? And one of the ways that we have approached that is by looking for opportunities to find efficiencies in areas including transportation. So to those everyone involved, that goes a long way towards protecting quality education and keeping our teachers focused in the classroom. So thank you. With that, I believe we also will get some reports out from Special Morning Plan, talking about strategic planning. And with that, Mr. Isola, again, please from the board, we send a very, very heartfelt thank you to all of your staff for their terrible efforts in getting ready for opening tomorrow.[286.36][286.48]- Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, good evening, everyone.
Certainly, I will send the good wishes and gratitude on behalf of the board to our staff. I must tell you that having been around the district over the last couple of days, it is so confirming about the commitment that exists here in Howard Township. Our staff has communicated, braved the heat within some of our buildings to ensure that their rooms are ready, in other cases collaborated. The PLC meetings that have been taking place, the meaningful dialogue that has existed, the rich communication in each of the buildings, every time I leave one of the buildings, I just have such a sense of pride that we are ready to receive our students with the greatest readiness and the most opening arms and welcoming arms that you could imagine. And, you know, if that sounds funny, you know, so be it because I believe that, you know, we're getting trusted, these children from our community, our parents, and it's our obligation and responsibility to take care of them like our own. And I can tell you that that is exactly what I've seen over the last few days, readiness for that. At Adelphi, they talked about smiling minds, where you learn. And, you know, everywhere I've gone, Middle School South has painted murals and backed up positive statements. And everywhere you look, there's emphasis and a focus on culture and climate that I'm really excited about as we talk about those things on this day and this form about the importance of positive school culture and how relevant that is to a child's learning, the comfort that they feel. So it's with great confidence that we open the doors tomorrow. It's with great gratitude to our excellent staff in every department, every rep, grandeur of this district. The buildings are shining and gleaming from the great work from the building around. It's a hobby with us tonight. Transportation folks, the readiness. It just goes without saying that this has become the expectation, but there'll be each and every year a certain sense of excitement for me. So you are right of the mark, sir. There is congratulations and gratitude for us to send to our staff because without a great staff, you know, we become ordinary. And we know firsthand here that ordinary is not acceptable. That's how we lead, and it's because of fine people in the district that that is the case. So I couldn't agree more with you, sir. Tomorrow, we open the doors and nearly 6,000 students will run from the buses into the buildings and will be ready. We're looking forward to it. I've had a couple invites that helped the kindergarten students off from buses and saw our school. So we'll see if we can land the fines for our third graders or Walters, those two of my early schools tomorrow. So a little hint to let them know I'll be over there. So we're looking forward to doing that with a smile on our face. You know, tomorrow will be our first day of the school year. We'll be presented with a challenge, and that's the heat. Let me not avoid that, let me get in front of it. We will be open. Superintendent has not exercised the heat advisory half-day. We'll be open for a full day of school. And I know that will be challenging with some settings. I've discussed with each of our principals in the non-climate control buildings about activated heat protocols. They discussed it with staff. Last year, we did a measure, the Sansac agreement along. Approximately 40% of our buildings in our non-climate control buildings have access to cooling, ignition, and cooling systems. So it's more than you would think. So the rotation of classes through those areas are helpful so that the same children are not always put in a classroom that is non-accommodation for the entire day. They take breaks. The staff is very well-versed in managing this. They've done it for many years, and the leadership of each and every building is prepared for that. We did get a snap through this week in specifically Adelphi, but also Weibo, which are climate-controlled buildings. Some of the cooling devices in those buildings have failed, and we've been working on bringing them back online, and that's been a challenge. The manufacturer of those items have gone out of business, and Mr. Coolidge and his staff on Mr. Sansac's direction have worked buildings to get it on. The problem that we face there is that those buildings do not have the right to send access to cooling devices. They're purely, like the building we sit in, climate-controlled buildings. So if those systems drop offline, it becomes stagnant. It becomes a little bit of concern. So in preparing for the heat and readiness, we've actually rented cooling chills. They're on the property right now and being brought online so that we will be able to chill the water that then gets pushed into our system because the chills in the building are already going to do that. We need to ensure advice that is suitable for learning, and we do not want to open with that. So we've taken a step to address that concern so that folks, both the staff and the students at Adelphi and of course Weibo, which is also putting along a little bit, will be, you know, safe and comfortable on their first day of school. And then the weather should be breaking. We should be okay as the maintenance department will continue to work on solutions and retrofitting, finding a chiller that they can retrofit into the existing system. And we have confidence that we'll be able to do that by the time the weather turns again. So it was a, you know, a measure we felt necessary that we took to support the, again, the first day of school and students and staff. We were expecting close to 90 degrees by the way. We need to make sure that we weren't putting children or staff in harm's way. On an odd opening note, attracted, we've gotten some good news. I know that this board has been pretty verbal about it. During the process of going through the achievement J, the teacher J, systems of the teacher evaluations, there's been some toggling back and forth. And teacher evaluation for testing areas, so Langs, Johnson, Mads specifically in the elementary districts, have more, slightly, 30% of their evaluation come from student tests. And there's a whole formula that we go through to get to that. I am really proud and happy to report to you that the Commissioner along with the Governor has solidly been adjusting that, and it is now going through account. It's the state law that accounts, I'm sorry, federal law that accounts. So our state is giving 5% for teacher evaluation directly tied to high-stakes testing, such as PRC in our state. I absolutely think that is a respectful move and a move that emphasizes respect for the professionals that are working. By no means did anyone be confused that I don't think for a second that accountability is important or that the results of our students' work is relevant to our evaluation of our success. But to tie high-stakes testing to individual teachers when it takes the entire community to educate that child has been absolutely unfair and heavy-handed. And I am so pleased to share that news tonight that our state Department of Education has made that move to alleviate as much as possible of that burden onset. So I think that's a positive break to the school year and restore the professionalism that belongs in the teaching career. So with that, I know we have a lot to do in terms of after this meeting, finalizing the openings. So I don't want to go long, so I want to conclude my remarks there. And thank you all for your support in ensuring that our school district is ready to receive our children tomorrow. So thank you.[819.80][819.92]- Thank you, Mr. Isola.
Mr. Sansac.[823.16][823.28]- Thank you.
There is a committee for executive session this evening, so it is time for the approval of the minutes, sir. If I can have a moment, second.[829.80][829.92]- Good, motion.[832.12][832.24]- Move.[833.24][833.36]- Nurse Miller, second.[835.12][835.24]- Second.[836.24][836.36]- Second.[837.36][837.48]- Nurse Miller.[838.48][838.60]- I guess so.[840.04][840.16]- May I take that, or?[841.32][841.44]- Yes, please.[842.44][842.56]- Mr. Miller.[843.56][843.68]- Yes.[844.68][844.80]- Mrs. Mallon.[845.80][845.92]- Yes.[846.92][847.04]- Mr. Gerber.[848.04][848.16]- Yes.[849.16][849.28]- Dr. Love.[850.28][850.40]- Yes.[851.40][851.52]- Mrs. Manon.[852.52][852.64]- Yes.[853.64][855.12]- Mr. Bon Jomani.[856.12][856.24]- Yes.[857.24][857.36]- Mr. O'Brien.[858.36][858.48]- Yes.[859.48][859.60]- Minutes are approved. Eight votes in favor, none opposed. The correspondents and board has received. We'll be going for the record. It is time for committee updates on the fourth, sir.[871.12][871.24]- Very good.
I will start on my way. So again, anything from the township recently?[876.76][876.88]- I'll just wait for that meeting paper somehow.[879.96][880.08]- Right, okay. So we still need to set up that time for that picture. Thank you. Hopefully, we can get that done sometime before the end of October. So Sansac, any thoughts on that?[890.84][890.96]- I believe Mr. Bon Jomani and Mr. Isola discussed
that committee action along with Mrs. Manon will consider trying to set a time for everyone else at school for a kid-together activity, sir.[905.36][905.48]- That's a time that can be pretty busy,
but hopefully we have enough to approve by the committee. Good, thank you. Okay. Nurse Miller.[914.96][915.08]- O'Brien has not met since our last meeting
in our Mount Kansas School. We need his next lead to meet on October 11.[924.12][924.24]- Sure, thanks, sir.
Nurse Miller. Community interaction is not met. And Mr. Isola and I will be discussing tomorrow, looking at the calendar, to set up a schedule for the school year.[939.68][939.80]- The education committee is not in effect this month, but I will report on that professional learning committee meeting that will be held at 2:00. So we're really very excited because we're going to be starting our strategic planning process, a refresh. And the committee will be particularly involved with working on that. So to that note, we have been affirmed with Captain Ewan Warren, sort of, Captain Mike, February 1st and 2nd. So those are dates to be called. She has those in for us. And it will be a Friday afternoon, 6:00. And Saturday, we'll begin the time to 8:30 to be refreshed. And so October 17th is the date that we did a non-completion tomorrow, but she will come and talk to us about what that process looks like on October 17th. So we're really excited. We're going to be doing that board goal that October 3rd. We're doing an activity to qualify those board goals for October 1st, starting the refresh. And thank you guys very much. Does the committee have anything?[1017.72][1017.84]- Good.[1018.84][1018.96]- So we're really very excited.[1020.52][1020.64]- Okay, good. Thank you. And Nurse Miller.[1027.56][1027.68]- Operations has not met since the last meeting, but I want to acknowledge the fact that I was pushing communication to our community and families about the changes in transportation this year. Basically, the website cannot be accessed without waiting for any information that isn't shared on social media as well. We, as a committee, in our continued efforts to become more efficient and work with the finance committee to tighten our belts, so to speak, without sacrificing the high quality of education this district provides, we're dedicated to achieving increased efficiency and still provide courtesy buzzing, especially with the limited safety cuts over the next seven years. The safety of our services is always a priority, and I understand that transportation, as well as Mr. Sansac, have received calls with concerns and comments about the changes. If there is indeed a safety issue, I feel confident it will be addressed. Mr. Sansac has visited some of the locations himself to assess the safety concerns. One concern that I've reported for me is the inclement weather and snow piles at bus stops rendering those stops unsafe. This is an issue no matter where the stops are, whether they are in front of someone's house or down the street at a corner. After speaking with Mr. Sansac, I know that there is communication happening between the district and the township about that specific issue. Mr. Sansac, would you please update the board about any comments other than that you've been receiving? Appreciate it.[1121.16][1121.28]- Sure.
You know, it is an appreciation to IT for having that push out there and getting some calls. We had worked for several years with the township, and on days when bus stops are inaccessible, we end up still staying closed. So they are addressing that. They're including all the bus stops on their map maps. They have maps where each individual truck piles. Mr. DeVilla, the new DPW director, worked very closely with us last year. He cleared bus stops, and so that should not... And that, I believe, are two separate issues. Snowing the bus stop has no impact on fewer bus stops, but I guess more attention to it, there should be more students at the same stop, and he has committed to that. But on the same token, there were some concerns about hoggy grass, and they've also taken care of that. Some of our stops are on township property, and as soon as I called, they went out and took care of it. So we have that good cooperation with PD, with DPW, with everybody. So we are going to try to, although we're not in route software, we're able to digitize the bus stops so that they can digitize it onto their mapping. So we're in close contact. I'm sure we'll get that done before the first snowfall. I did guarantee one month it would be a snowbar, so hopefully I'm correct. So it is going well. We, as I reported, in finance and operations, we estimate that the work that the transportation department did this year on consolidating routes and shortening time on buses so that we could get more students on and have a higher percentage of payments on our buses, we saved over $300,000. That will go a long way to alliterate the cuts that we're seeing. And we'll continue that each year. It will probably be a little bit further parking stops and a little bit more, larger number to an early stop.[1242.00][1242.11]- Thanks.[1243.11][1243.24]- Thank you.[1244.24][1247.32]- Hi, I have a question about that training on today.[1250.24][1250.35]- Oh, thank you, yes.[1253.52][1253.64]- Yes, Brady Hines from the Sheriff's Department along with Mr. Rattler and I, and Mr. Fernandez from the People's Services Department, excuse me, had a training session with the A's drivers for the Transportation Department, and it went very well. I think it was very well received. A lot of good thoughtful questions from the staff, some anecdotes and stories to help each other understand some of those things. And it was, I believe, well-received. He also spent a few minutes on Project LifeSaver. He has agreed, he is going to share with us the names of the students that are enrolled in our schools that wear one. So it was very well received. And thank you to both you and the operations committee for supporting that. I think it's going to go a long way. We also, although the lines have always been open, we reinforce the lines of communication between the drivers, the building administration, and the people services personnel that are in each building. Because the one thing that was very clear from all the trainers, as well as from the questions the drivers were asking, every student is unique, and everyone has their own, and they may change from day to day. So there's no one cookie cutter answer. So we reinforce that communication vector as well. So thank you. Thank her for bringing that up.[1342.00][1342.12]- Hold on.[1343.12][1345.84]- Again, still to coozer, but thank you for bringing that up.[1349.04][1349.16]- All right, hold on. Really.[1351.28][1353.64]- Mr. Gerber.[1354.84][1354.96]- Policy committee has not met since our last board meeting.
And as for legislative advocacy, we're trying to set up a date that's agreed for all members of the committee to meet in the year.[1366.16][1366.28]- And I apologize.
I have a recall today. Maybe we can chat back in the meeting and pick a date.[1371.88][1372.00]- Very good, thank you.
I believe I conclude our committee liaison reports.[1377.12][1377.24]- Now time for the first public comment. Mr. Sir.[1381.16][1381.28]- Where is that according to education terms of comments
for the public? It lasts 45 minutes. It will be conducted in accordance with PIL 0164.1, and vehicles may be limited to three minutes each. The officer respects the time of call. It will be President of Board, Mr. Simpity O'Brien, and the board meeting, sir.[1396.72][1396.84]- Please.[1398.20][1398.32]- Are there comments at this time?[1399.64][1399.76]- Seeing none, closing floor.[1402.28][1402.40]- Comments are closed. So should I just sign and not list it right now, sir?[1406.56][1406.68]- Great, and I believe it's time for...[1408.24][1408.36]- Don't move me on that.[1410.12][1410.24]- Are we?[1411.24][1415.84]- Are we not moving the board goals?[1418.32][1418.44]- We're going to take the board goal to owe you that report
was up over there, but certainly...[1423.64][1423.76]- Nobody has a discussion for the world? Everybody's...[1427.64][1430.04]- Okay, so then we have a board discussion items for what is known as a world. I heard it all. The world.
The world.
21st century stuff, okay. Very good. Well, then, I would expect that if we're going to do that, someone would actually understand what a world is. It's often... Start from the front.[1457.04][1459.96]- We have an email?[1461.04][1461.16]- Yeah. Yes.[1463.28][1465.88]- So...[1468.44][1468.56]- Sorry.[1469.56][1470.52]- So when we go up to the good activity preparation for developing our board goals, we have done this under our choice. And we've also done a very good discussion meeting to talk about vision and plan. It's to throw out some concepts so that we can look to see with the world, it'll highlight some common, common comments, common threads. And we would use those concepts in putting together board goals. So professional learning, we do wordsmithing, or we can actually come forward to what's greater than the board.[1511.04][1516.88]- I'm sorry, Dr. Love, Mr. Calvert, I ran a quick sidebar. Did you set up the context in terms of the difference between what makes a board goal, board goal versus other goals? So I apologize for my question.[1532.88][1533.00]- Fine. So if we look actually, not on this agenda, but the difference is before it sets our goals, we're going to do whatever we can. The district is set, and the district goals are goals that complement the administration. So we don't... Yep. If you turn to page two on our paper agenda, you'll see the district goals. And those are student achievement, district culture and climate, community interaction, and technology. So those are goals that the administration sets. And then at the... Let's see if I can just look through those. Then at the bottom, where these are goals that we've had actually for 2016 to 2018. Governance, stewardship, and student achievement. So just be mindful that as we're throwing out concepts, we don't necessarily have to stick to these topics. We go through different topics, and it's open process. So I just wanted to highlight that.[1607.64][1607.76]- So within the world, if I'm right, Dr. Love, so the idea was to use a world in trying to select your goals, not start tripping over very specific language, to try to get the concepts that are the priority for the board members here in terms of what they would like for their board goal. So the professional learning committee asked that we do a world here, and the idea is to do three-word goals. So you're going to go ahead, and you're really just now verb adjective for the concept of the goal that you think would be a priority. Not to mess around with specific language. The committee will take that, take the world and design a specific language and bring that back on October, October 3rd. So you can go into the site that we sent out the link. And if you can't get into the link for the actual world, we can help you. But as an example, you can see up on the screen that's what your entry section looked like. I entered in increased student success. So what you see up on the screen there is increased student success. I also added another, that might be student achievement growth. Right, simple concept areas. Those may not be the goals that we want to keep, but those are some of the examples that we were discussing earlier in the professional learning committees. So not limit to one goal or one goal concept. You can keep entering in your three-word goal. But for each one, it's a noun verb and adjective anyone enter in.[1695.16][1695.28]- Oh, this is a district goal for a minute?[1697.00][1697.12]- These are board goals. Yeah, I see. These are board goals.[1700.56][1702.88]- This world will then be used to springboard
the creation of the goals that will bring you back on the track.[1709.24][1709.36]- Right.[1710.36][1719.36]- How many does we build this once?[1721.44][1721.56]- As many times as... Three-word sets? So let's try limiting it to four as much as we can. Two or three goals become manageable.[1735.24][1735.36]- Three words that is...[1736.36][1736.48]- Yeah, so noun, verb, adjective, that'll keep the concept of the goal. And if you see the screen behind us, you start to see the things that are coming out that are starting to emerge as priorities.
Okay, so, um, and Mr. Press and I were just kind of having a sidebar. What we can do is leave this open, so that, I know, uh, Mr. Thor was running late, he got held up. So the event that he doesn't, we want to make sure that all nine board members have our two express voice. And then as the learning, uh, professional, uh, learning committee gets together and works out some of those, um, phrases to establish recommendations for goals that the board will get to have a conversation about on, um, on our next one being on the third. Uh, at least that every board member will have a chance. So if it's, uh, Dr. Love's chair or, or President's, we can give this off for a couple hours. We'll be hushed in the middle of the night, you can go to that, that little thing in there, and then it will add to the, uh, to the information that the committee will then wrap up with. So I think that's, that's good, uh... Yeah, well, right, but it's okay, it's ours, and that's all we want to do. You know, I know that was your charge to make sure that there was not too many, too much, so, um...
It's certainly been a hallmark for this board, and I know that the professional learning committee has really pushed this idea that only working with goals is important to get everyone's voice in for what it's nine microphones. You know, like, plus mine, for instance. It becomes hard sometimes to get a word in edgewise, so this allows us to really sort of democratize the voice by using the technology.
So Dr. Love, I think this would be good information for us to, you know, uh, Mr. Press will screenshot and capture as it is today. But again, leave that open and visit it tomorrow evening, uh, to make the final screenshot. So that we can then have that at our next meeting for our committee to work through that. And I think that's a great launch for, uh, the establishing of a sheer goal for the board.
Just pressing the S, I don't know if you can see them, like, the S here over there, is that...
Looks to me like it's probably a typo. Those are tiny keyboards we're working on there. It's easy to say.
It looks like, uh, this is a personal, so wherever we should be.
Not surprising. It's also, it's also interesting if you let this go and this will be up there, if you buy those, it wouldn't be surprising to this board that that would be a much larger order.
So, yeah, so we sort of start to get lost in the word all. So the professional learning committee will get together and then start kind of teasing out the patterns and what they mean, uh, and how they might be sort of then separated into goal areas, and then refine the language into suggested goals that I think Dr. Love referenced a moment ago, bring back the board on October third. I had a sample draft, and then refine at the base, and then potentially vote as goals for ourselves, right? And I call the meeting.
That, uh, that we concluded.
We got, put it down.
Everyone in committee for, for sets? So seeing that we closed the poll, uh, further discussion outside, or shall we wait for, um, additional commentary from our other board members? And maybe continue the discussion next, we'll need a professional word. Any thoughts, questions, comments? Seeing none? Okay, then that concludes this discussion, sir.
Now for the discussion next, it is entirely within concern here.
Well, you will, we're going to hold it for, to make sure that...
Yes, we will be open, we can continue to add, uh, frames.
Yes, it's concerning. Well, I think, I think it's hit its limit. If I can open up the limit, I will, it's not, we'll make sure that we gather the three-word they put anyway, and then back to the, you know.
Additional, additional items, I just wanted to comment, um, I just took a half of a ten-second tour, we have to do that over here. Um, and, um, the locate, uh, menus online, I'm very excited personally, and as a board member, to see the, the changes in our, um, food services. And, um, I've been told that, um, soon they will actually be interactive menus. You can actually click on each item on the menu and see the breakdown of nutritional value and all that. So, so the menu is going to be more valuable to, to the community, um, ones that have been running. So I just wanted to make that comment now. I'm looking forward to, um, food services and success in the year. Thank you.
Is that, uh, menu you dropped, dropped down part of the website capabilities from the new, uh, report, or... Oh, Mr. Thor?
I'm looking, sir, right.
There you go, and then you get the word on the word.
We'll get them, we're like to, we're currently locked to.
Yeah, we'll have to get you locked and, you know, okay. So, uh, see if you can open that up from Mr. Press and...
I can now have a verb in him and that, you're free.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Something's quite licensing.
People work.
Of work, right. All right, so, uh, with that, we are going to, of course, uh, look for, uh, Mr. Thor's additions to our, our word and, uh, we'll take that back to the professional word. Again, thank you for that, I do have to include that, especially unless Mr. Thor's everything, any files or books? All right, very good.
It's time for the consent agenda, and, um, glad to say that with our new dynamic agenda, there are no reprints and no withouts, so...
Wow, I think that's the first in my, uh, almost decade, yeah. All right, very good. Move by Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Obers.
May I take that or not, sir? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Obers?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Dr. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Manhattan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjuvani?
Yes, but I refuse myself on three thousand seven and three thousand thirteen.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved, I go to the paper and I'm closed with the extension and, and for, uh, the people noted for the record. It's now time for the second public comment, sir.
Let's open the floor.
Noting my previous announcement on public comment, are there main employees open?
One is open.
Are there comments?
Seeing none, let's close the floor.
Move it.
We are confirmed.